I'm going to bed.
Recording in progress.
I got the swimming done by noon.
Oh, wow.
1:30, 2 o'clock.
They're gonna be asking you back.
All right, we ready to go? All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the town of Superior Town Council dinner with our planning commissioners. So, welcome, planning commissioners. Why don't we go around the table and introduce ourselves? I think we know everybody, but just to make it easier, I'm Mark Laces, I'm the mayor.
Glad to know that. David Harper, I'm the chairman of the planning commission.
Renee Stavros, planning and building director.
Jen Cowish.
Mike Barnes, planning commission.
Ryan Mojo, planning commission.
Amanda Vaughn, planning commission.
Anne Shanahan, planning commission.
Jason Surblu, Mayor of Port town.
Heather Perry-Crack, council member.
Ms. Cathy Miller, council member.
And we've got Manager Magley with us. Neil Shaw is going to be remote tonight. I don't think he's going to be able to join us for the dinner. And then Mike Foster is
Late.
Late, he'll be coming, but he's not here yet.
Oh, another.
We've got more, more planning commissioners. Just in time. Introductions.
Want me to start? You can finish.
You're the end.
Hi, Lonnie Root.
Planning commission.
All right. Well, we have a two item agenda, but I'm happy to add anything else that you want to talk about. But I'll turn it over to David to take it away.
Okay, well, I have a curiosity question first. How many people read the Daily Camera last Sunday?
I did.
So you saw yourself quoted on the second page?
I didn't.
Yes. The Daily Camera actually did a write-up on our planning commission meeting and put it on the second page of the Sunday Camera. It quoted Lonnie and Michael Gordon and Ryan and Steve Witty. It was a very nice write-up, basically talked about what we wanted to talk about. So I was kind of surprised. We don't usually feature as a famous group. Anyway, okay, so the first item on the agenda is an update on a comprehensive plan. I think I'm going to ask Renee to give us a few comments on where it stands at the moment. And then the questions that we really need to ask council since we're here are, if you had two or three items that you really wanted to see clarified in the plan, what would they be? I mean, issues around the opportunity areas, issue around the other areas. If you wanted to see some, it's sort of moving into the, my impression is it's moving into the next page because we had the open house a week or so ago. So if there's any direction that we should be trying to take it in, this is probably a good time to think about it.
All right.
Yeah, you are absolutely right. So right now, we're doing a whole bunch of community engagement. You all have seen it. We've done the speaker series this Thursday, the last one on economic development. All the past ones are on YouTube to listen to. And then we had the open house last Thursday. And the survey opened up today on Shape Superior for anyone who was unable to attend the open house. We had a pretty great attendance and it was a, it was a really good open house. I felt good about it. I don't know how you all felt about it, but
Yeah, do you know how many people?
Well, on the sign up sheet, we had some, I didn't count the exact number, 65 or 70
Okay.
on the, on the sign up sheet, but I think there was some more. That came through for sure. That said, the, there are goals for each chapter of the comprehensive plan that were kind of outlined in the open house and are on the survey. And if you didn't see them, but you were at the open house, or you want to take a closer look, you're welcome to go into the survey and take the survey or just review the items in the survey, chapter by chapter. The feedback we get from like the goals will help us develop the strategies and then the actions that go into like creating the draft plan. The consulting team is going to come to planning commission and council, I think in July or August. Once we have, you know, collected the information from the engagement and have compiled it into like something that we can share other than just what we think we saw at the open house and stuff. So, so that's like the next time that they'll be presenting to you all is sometime in July and August. Yeah, I don't, I think that's really where we're at is, you know, goals, strategies, draft plan, chapter by chapter, looking at, you know, what makes sense. And the opportunity areas is its own chapter. So they're kind of separated in the survey, surveys. So there's vision, values, goals by chapter, and then opportunity areas and uses that are possible for each opportunity area. So if you have feedback, welcome to take notes tonight too. But generally, what are your thoughts so far and expectations for like the next phase? Or do you have expectations for the next phase?
Well, I think one of, actually, it was an original suggestion from Mike. I think one of the issues at the open house was that there was no value attached to town 15. It was what would you like to do with town 15? And there was no information there about what it might cost to do anything with town 15. And in retrospect, I think that was something that was missing. So when it comes to planning, when it comes to doing the other opportunity areas, I think it would be useful to know, okay, let's leave it as open space. Suppose you put single family housing on it, suppose you put multifamily housing on it. What would the benefits and costs of a town be around each of those areas?
When we go through the comprehensive plan process and when the draft gets formulated, we look into all different areas. There's an economic development section that'll talk about, you know, what impacts different opportunity areas have and, you know, what that might look like from like an economic development standpoint. We chose not to include that information when we're looking at land uses because they're two separate, they're, they're separate topics. They're equally important to look at and understand the big picture. But when we look at opportunity areas, we wouldn't provide more information for one than we would for all of the others.
No, I'd like to have the information.
For all of them, right, yeah, which I hear what you're saying. I just, usually when we look at land uses, we don't include the financial information. Like we will in the plan itself as to like what makes sense for, for those. But just to get people to think about what they'd like to see there, we separate that out from like the value. For right or wrong, it's just kind of how we've always done it. And I don't know if that's good or bad or otherwise.
I mean, the 2012 plan just makes suggestions, you know, this could be commercial or it could be residential or whatever. I mean, in retrospect, that offers such a wide range of possibilities that it's actually not providing a whole lot of guidance.
I was just saying, I also think that's important since we're, our opportunity areas are shrinking. I mean, back in the day, we had like 12 or 15 where that would have been a huge task where this, we only have three. Providing more information might be easier.
One thing I was thinking, I'd like to get the council's take on, if we're talking about economics, or I think one of the council's goals is fiscal sustainability for the town. If that's the case, and it's a real high one, it seems like we should really look at that for each of the opportunity areas, the impacts of it, like, should we put a rec center somewhere? Can we really afford a rec center? Is it even worth considering or talking about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think on the question of like a rec center, one of the things that we've always struggled with is, you know, what the demand would be for that, right? And when, when you have a place like Lifetime and then you've got the Louisville Rec Center, what is our population? And then, you know, what is the cost of a rec center going to be? What's, what's the actual usage? And then sports table, of course, yeah. So what, what would be the, the actual usage on a kind of per resident basis? And
Sure.
Does the cost benefit analysis weigh in favor one way or the other? So I think, I think, you know, I don't know if it's necessarily something that needs to be done on every single parcel, but on certain questions for sure. Just because part of it is giving the right expectations to the community, right? Like, I think with, with the rec center, I think for a long time, there was like this expectation that we were going to do a rec center. Then that was before we had the community center. Now that we have the community center, it was kind of like, well, we've got some, some uses there that would have been included in a, in a rec center that kind of like further made an actual rec center, I think, less and less of a possibility realistically. So I think in terms of setting expectations to the community as to what they can expect our community actually like afford is something that I'd be interested in at least exploring.
And just so that it doesn't go unsaid, there are at least one person who believes that the comprehensive plan should cover comprehensively and not individual relationships to each of the possible land use opportunities that exist. So I'm, I was looking at it more as seeing what are the, what are the numbers going to be in the economic development piece as opposed to individual pieces of property? Many of which are big question marks because there is an owner in there that we have no idea what it would be. And so I'm personally looking at it more in that, in terms of what, what is, what do we see the town of Superior going to be in five to 10 years? And how is the big economic implications of that? As opposed to any of the individual opportunities of us?
Yeah.
Just so that
Yeah, so it does that while also considering, so you look at it holistically and you decide, we only have seven areas left. And what, from an economic development standpoint, you wouldn't necessarily look at each individual one, but you want to know what types of uses you need within the town and then how those will impact the town from an economic development standpoint. So that, you know, like you, you do look at it by the land uses that make sense in your opportunity areas and how those relate to the town's future, you know, plans from an economic development standpoint.
So I guess, I don't know, so economic, fiscal sustainability seems to be something we should look at is what I'm hearing. How about any other big picture goals or challenges towns facing that we should look at? That's something that to the extent possible, we could help address with land use recommendations?
One of the things that I'm interested in seeing how it updates is, I was just looking at the conflict from 2012. So we've got an appendix there for economic and demographic trends. So obviously updating the demographic trends in terms of what census showed in 2020, how we compare, how we're growing in relation to our neighbors. But then also how that is changing, you know, the housing needs in the community in terms of the percentage of the population that is, you know, aging and in need of like senior housing? And then the percentage of the population that would be, you know, starter home buying population, but that can't afford to buy in Superior based on what's currently available? And how that impacts school enrollment numbers and how PBSD is looking at, you know, they've got 16,000 seats district-wide, we only have 10,000 students in the entire district. How that, how, how our numbers might relate to some of our neighbors in terms of those trends? And then also, one of the things that strikes me as kind of different now versus what we had in 2012 was we are now post pandemic, we're post the Zoom revolution, and we've got a lot more people that are no longer commuting down to, well, people are starting to commute again, but it's still less than it was. So the, the amount of people that are actually working remotely, either part or still 100%. And how that's kind of like impacting opportunities for, for the town in terms of business that could invest in Superior and whatnot. So it would be interesting to know like what percentage of our community still works at home?
And Sorry, another area that was covered in the 2012 plan was the economics of the marketplace and what their projections were of the sales there, were they going up, were they going down? Were they going to be, how much were they going to be affected by further development along 36? My sense is that most of the 2012 projections didn't work out. It would be interesting to have them updated and see what the new ones look like.
David, if I might throw another ask in with the comprehensive plan. Councilman Cowish and I were on planning commission with you only for talking about doing this. And I'm very excited to see this go forward. You know, you talk about the economic viability of the town and we're basically running out of space to do things with. I'd like to maybe address what are the possibilities of acquisition of new lands from unincorporated Boulder County to the Northwest? You know, Boulder County is also going through cash crunches. So this could be an opportunity for us in the future to be able to acquire more land that we might be able to develop for affordable housing for middle income, for 55 plus, for seniors. So I'd like to see us be able to position ourselves in a good space where we can grow the town and be able to achieve a lot of the goals that we currently can't hit and, and make it, make it a just a cohesive effort where it's, you know, one Superior, rather than we're just trying to add a neighbor here or there, just try to push us into a better economic position for the future.
I just have to ask my consultant, is that a
That's a big ask.
Well, we, we do have, I mean, cushing
Cushing material, yeah.
I mean, there is a scope of work that they're working to at the moment. So the question would be, is that, I mean, is that contained within the, or could that be accomplished within the existing scope of work?
Sure.
And it obviously depends how much, how deep you want to get into it and things like that. But I mean, there's obviously some land that we can take in the northwest or get in the Northwest town because I think our next planning commission meeting is discussing annexing the land next to Guardian Storage, for instance.
Yes, yes.
That would be a first step, but a rather small one, I think.
And just continuing that track, because I think, you know, Jen, when we were talking, talking about the fluidity of the comprehensive plan, not that we write it, we're done and it's going to stay like that for the next 20 years. It can incorporate change, it can incorporate some sort of dynamic growth so that we can, you know, continue to have a prosperous town and not have to worry about things such as the big taboo having to raise taxes one day, if nobody wants to see that. So how can we continue to grow the town in a positive direction?
Well, I remember one of Mark's early comments on the comprehensive plan was he didn't want another pile of paper that was put on the shelf and nobody ever read. So we've been trying to think of ways to make it a more interactive process. And I think that sort of goes in the direction that you were asking for as well.
Yeah, so you're talking about annexing land beyond the handful of parcels that are on 76th Street that have already been identified.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. Future growth, yeah. Because we're landlocked, we're surrounded by open space, excuse me, or land that's in a, you know, different county or a different town. So I just want to make sure that if, if there are possibilities to have these conversations in the future, that we can address that and not surprise the entire community by, oh, what are you doing now? It's like, we're trying to continue to make Superior viable town.
I think that's a really important piece, especially when, you know, I, I come from a background of educators and, you know, the, the idea of like wraparound connections in a community. It's, you know, those are the pieces that really bring a community together. They're the ones that help the families, the kids. And, you know, in, in a community such as ours where, you know, the workforce is outside of our, our bounds, educators are outside of our bounds. We are missing out on a huge lifeblood that is wraparound connections in that, you know, you have an educator that is taking that extra stuff. I'm, I'm, I am a product of wraparound connections from my own community. I landed here in Superior, I'm from California. And we, we landed here before we knew we were having kids. I now have 15 month olds, twins. So I'm looking for, you know, what wraparound connections look like in four years, you know? Do I have a, a teacher or a workforce that is living in my community and is able to put in that extra time? None of us are here to argue that teachers are already putting in overtime, but, you know, where are they putting in their overtime? Is it an hour and a half to commute into our city from outside? And I think, you know, many of these opportunities, whether they're available to us right now or in the future, which I'm so excited to hear, they're, they're so beneficial to our entire community, not just the, the community that's being, being put into the comprehensive plan right now or the one of 2012. And so I, I, I'm happy to hear those opportunities are continuing to bubble up because I think, you know, even from our planning commission last week, we're, we're looking at it and going, hey, we don't have too many more opportunities to get all this stuff done. And I'm, I'm pleased to hear that we are continuing to look for those outside opportunities because this, this community is not going to happen with what we have currently being spoken in email and at our, our town halls. We, we need more. Pleased to hear it.
Yeah, well, and you brought up the point of, you know, I mean, I assume you're getting to the point of, you know, having teachers be able to live in our community. So along with that, firefighters, you know, police or sheriffs, the town staff. That was coming.
All right, I made seven years. Town staff.
Yeah, away from us at the end of the day. Yeah. Well, you know, and there are, you know, there is, I think it's the transportation department who has a Venn diagram with 3,000 people commuting into Superior for employment, 6,000 commuting out. And I might be wrong, but I think it's 287 living and working here in town. And that is a dynamic that it would be, that I don't think is sustainable. And it, I think we lose a lot with, with so many people coming and going as opposed to living here and, you know, seeing people around town and just being part of the same community. And that's very tied to affordability. It's very tied to changing demographics. You know, the economics of, do we have that missing middle housing? Do we have housing options at different levels? So I, I think that's critical to address and really be thoughtful about in the comprehensive plan. Yeah, I, I would love people to be able to live and work. And that also helps transportation in terms of cutting down on traffic.
It's a good point. I'm curious, and I totally agree with what you're saying. Those figures, do we, because I know exactly which diagram you're talking about. Do we know what the date was on that? Because to your point, so many people are working from home. When you said that smaller figure for how many people are actually not commuting, I'm wondering when that's from? Because I'm like, I can't imagine it's that small now after COVID, there's so
Or I'm not sure how it's counting people, people remote workers. I'm not sure, I don't know, because you're right. We can, we probably could go around the table and come up with 287 people who work remotely.
So I'm curious what it is now, if that's not a current figure.
Yeah. Renee, do you happen to know?
I mean, I know that the figure that is in there is from post COVID numbers, but I don't know how they calculate those numbers for people who commute sometimes and work from home, others, or how, like, I don't know, I don't know the numerical basis for how those numbers are calculated, so.
Yeah. I'd be curious, just because I feel like that shapes a lot of the discussion too around, you know, commuting in and out and what that actually looks like. But agree that our workforce, there's a lot of them that are not able to live here and it would be nice if they could.
Yeah. Yeah, down the road, I really think we will be competing with other communities for employees. And if people have to commute in and they're at the same kind of jobs down the road, you know, we could, we could be in a really difficult position in terms of hiring.
Following up on Lonnie's comments about town staff, how important, I mean, I think, how many buildings are town staff in at the moment, Matt?
I think we have a dozen.
Half dozen, I mean, is it important to start figuring out how to consolidate some of that or not? I mean, we have a vacant lot at the back here, which has been vacant for a long time. I'm sure the rabbits are enjoying it. I've never seen so many rabbits.
This year was going to be sick. This year was going to be sick.
But, I mean, is that an important issue?
Maybe a conversation in, this existing structure itself can be modified for growth because this used to be, from what I understand, a farmhouse that was heavily modified to be town hall. So is this going to be structurally sound? Can we build on top? Can we put a second story? Or do we have to, like you said, do we have to take advantage of the parcel behind us and another parcel? Or do we have to relocate to some other parcel in town, which would make sense? Are we looking at combining that with removing the police station from...
Central, central.
From the marketplace and putting it right next to the, so it's kind of like a civic area and then taking all the, basically the, what do you call them, the orphaned apartments that are always spread around the town and bringing them into one cohesive building? So that could be something, and I know that Councilman Miller's been a champion of this, of bringing it together, so I think that would be something that I'd like to...
Is that an important issue for you? Or, I mean, town seems to run extraordinarily well from my perspective, actually. Usually I'd be inclined to leave it the way it was, but that might not be popular.
I think Councilman Miller's got a really good point about the, which we're spending on as well.
Yeah, so that's been a huge issue for me and one that I really want to take a look at because in addition to it being incredibly inefficient, and I've heard from staff members that, you know, when you are together, you collaborate better, it's much easier to get something done. I know for our residents, not having to try to figure out where that staff member is actually housed to get things done, it's a lot easier. But in addition to just the practicality of having everyone in one space, I don't think residents realize how much money we spend on rent each year, but it's exorbitant to the tune of over half a million dollars a year. So just running the financials, and I've done them several times, it makes a lot more sense for us to own a space where we can house everyone. And we did a staffing assessment to see where our staff levels are now, what we anticipate them being in the future, to make sure as we're looking at building something out either here, to Jason's point, to expand and pop the top or whatever that looks like, or looking in another space, you know, are we going to run out of space? So we know what those staff levels will most likely be, and it would be great to get it working once.
Well, the vacant office space in town, the vacant office lots in town are the ones up at Discovery Park. I mean, that was intended to be an office space, so if this is something you're interested in, maybe we should have Cushing Terrell look at what it would take to build an office in Discovery Park, or...
Yeah.
Yes, no? Maybe.
I'm looking at grant funding, and I know that there's grants out there that will help pay for that, so looking at what we can do to offset costs. But both physically and from an efficiency standpoint, it's been a huge issue for me and one that I want to really look at, so Planning Commission can help with that.
I just want to say structurally, it almost never makes sense to add a second story to a building. You have to strengthen the foundation, and it's hard to do that when there's building on top of it.
You don't know if this was made with the express, maybe in 30 years they're going to add a second story. It could have just been, like you said, one story, and that's it, and it's not going to go forward.
Yeah, I mean, if you planned for it before to add a second, then that's a different thing. But most things, no one does that. So then the foundation only, it's very hard to strengthen the foundation of a building on top of it.
But with a lot behind us, we could go out and up.
Yeah, yeah. No, any additions or anything, just adding a second story usually never works out unless there's a really special circumstance. Just put that out there.
And again, the, the concept here is, is it going to be to the town's advantage to have a central location for town services and police services? And if it is, then it's going to be the town council's responsibility to try to figure out how to make that work. And the idea of should this happen is something that frankly the comprehensive plan should address.
Yeah, I mean, you look at building costs are never going to go down, they're only going to keep going up as our rents, and rent is a sunk cost that, you know, we have space, but that's really all it accomplishes as opposed to having your own space that you control, and you're not having to pay utilities at multiple locations and IT at multiple locations. I mean, it just is a money stuff that, as a finance person, just kind of crushes me, and so I would really like to find a solution that makes a little bit more sense.
I think from my perspective, the, like, the idea of moving up the street to Discovery Office Park, you know, if that's going to include like an acquisition of some land and then construction, you know, when we already own the land here, I don't know if that necessarily makes sense to spend time thinking about, just kind of realistically. You know, we already have a community center, a second community center is about to come online, we're building the O and M building for our planning department and some parks staff as well. So, you know, it's really a question of just consolidating the folks that are across the street above Superior Liquor and, you know, whether they stay there or they come here into like an expanded town hall. That's kind of the, the question, I think ultimately for, for the council to, to make and explore. And I think we have enough land to expand, at least when we looked at it previously, to expand this building, whether it includes a second floor or not, to include all of those folks. But, I mean, I'm, I'm open to exploring, I just, I just, I don't want to spend enough like time exploring.
We're getting too excited.
Things that just aren't realistic.
I'm not proposing this, I'm just figuring it out as a possibility. One of the things, of course, is downtown, so how much is, how much is the comprehensive plan going to address what's the situation in downtown? Any?
Um, probably not. I mean, downtown, from the comprehensive plan perspective, is built.
Finished.
Right. I mean, it's obviously not from an economic and like what we want to see in downtown, and we don't have, you know, we're not building the, the lab office space currently, so that, you know, we hope to get, to come, but like, but it won't, like, it won't look at the information that you want to talk to the council about and like the unit by unit, you know, who comes in and builds out spaces and, you know, how can we encourage, you know, more businesses to come here stuff. I mean, it has a chapter on economic development, so it will address some of that in a broader perspective, but probably not what you're looking to discuss. Not the questions that you're wanting to ask the council.
That's fine. That's fine. Okay, so any more suggestions for the comprehensive plan? I guess one of the issues, one of the things that has to be rolled into it is some update on what the transportation plan looks like. The transportation plan looks fairly, I mean, based on the update we had, looks fairly straightforward in that, I mean, it sort of improves the casaling Marshall Junction, it's looking at additional safety for pedestrians and cyclists around town. I mean, it was fairly, it seemed fairly straightforward in terms of both the plan and implementing it. I mean, are there any other area issues around transportation?
I mean, from, from my, my perspective...
Worth considering.
The, the only changes or kind of transportation aspects that I'd really be interested in seeing is like insofar as there's a potential for any like infill development at the marketplace that includes some sort of residential component. Obviously, before any application to consider something like that would be approved, we'd need to look at what the traffic impacts would be on the local roads and how those, those people are going to coexist with the existing traffic and what the impacts of, you know, adding 500 families to the marketplace or something like that. And, you know, whether that would be a good idea, because I think that, that's, that's really the, the opportunity area for the future is, you know, exploring, because there's this pavement there that's unnecessary, there's way too many parking spaces, and there's an opportunity to, I think, capitalize on the access to the bus traffic transit stop with the RCD station there. And obviously, there's a push from the state to encourage more of that type of development consistent with the various, you know, state laws that have been passed over the past two legislative sessions. So if Bricksmore and/or any other landowner in that area is, you know, interested, and obviously there was previous concepts that were floated, but I could see something like that coming back in the future that would have a definite impact. So taking a look at that in the comp plan, I think would be...
I think one of the comments in the comp plan is that there are very few, actually quite few people in town who live within a 10-minute walk of the RCD station or any other transport, actually. I think Longmont has just initiated a program where they bought a number of vans and drive around.
Microtransit.
Microtransit.
That's what they call it.
So, I'm sure you know more about it than I do. I was just going to ask if there's any interest in pursuing something like that in Superior.
Yeah, they're, they're doing, I mean, they basically, they got some funding from the state, but they're piloting essentially like Longmont's own like Uber service.
Yeah.
Where you can get a subsidized for free ride from your home to transit areas.
So, we have that pile of ride or whatever, which is awesome, and free for kids, so.
Well, and RCD will be expanding, hopefully.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, like, the easier...
The marketplace, which will be great.
Rather than doing our own, just expanding that program would be awesome, especially because it's not available on the weekends.
No, I think seeing RCD expand into the marketplace will be important for all of us to either see if it works or if it doesn't and what's missing.
I think there's only one bus service in Superior.
Two, two A.
There's only two A.
Yeah.
Is there any prospect of getting more or should we be trying to get more?
Kill it every time.
Yeah, based on the ridership levels, I'm surprised that we still have two, two A.
Okay.
Yeah, that, it's almost easier to drive somewhere to get into the main, because that, that plus like adds quite a bit to your trip, if you try to use that and then go like two more routes.
Is the ride, I mean, do you know why the ridership is so low? I don't know. It just like comes with inconvenient times, doesn't go to convenient places, people have to walk miles to the...
I think most, most people in town have cars and are able to drive.
Or, or they bike.
Or they bike.
It also is like every hour.
Right.
Because I tried to, when there was a snowstorm, I was like, well, I'll just get on the bus. And then I waited an hour and it still didn't show up. It was, it was a big snowstorm, so it was like stuck somewhere, but like, I mean, if it only comes once an hour, you're adding like an hour to your commute. It's much easier to drive to the park and ride to the park and get on.
It's, it's really hard to make transit work, you know?
In a small...
Suburban area.
Yeah.
It's just, it's really, really difficult. You can have, you know, ridership on the Flatiron Flyers, good and improving, it was great before the pandemic. You used to take it, I used to always ride together. But that's, you know, all the commuters going back between, you know, Denver and Boulder. But, but then it's, you know, that last mile, right?
That last, and, and especially at that point, I had a kid, so I was dropping a kid off at daycare and then heading. And like, you can't really drop kids off at daycare on the bus on your kid's... Yeah, so.
Good enough.
It is unlikely in today's era that transportation is going to change people. People are going to do and use transportation to the extent that they are, are used to using it or will want to use it. And, you know, we could add 10 more bus routes in town and they still won't have ridership. Because people are inclined, especially the people in the town of Superior, they're inclined to stay inside to do a lot of shopping, but then they want to go outside to do lots of other things, and that requires transportation that they supply themselves as opposed to, which I think is a great idea, but, you know, you pop on the bus and you're in downtown Denver fairly easily, people just simply don't do it.
I, I was, the thing that's driving, was driving my bus ridership when I was driving, it was the parking. So like parking in downtown Denver right now at my work is $26 a day.
Yeah.
Bus pass is 10.
Yeah.
You do that more than two times a week, like bus pass becomes very, so I, I don't know, maybe limiting parking.
And it sort of works the, the opposite way in, in, from what I get in today's marketplace, and that is the commute from Superior into Denver is not as high as the commute from Superior to Boulder.
Yes.
True.
That doesn't surprise me.
And so the, the, it's all going this way now, and that just simply is not, not, not something that's changing.
But if we somehow made the commute to Boulder a lot more easier and cheaper and stuff, we could probably bolster somehow.
And that's why you're seeing across the highway there, development at that, that location.
The old movie theater.
The old movie theater will go, and, and again, if you're thinking about going to Boulder, you're going to, you either going to park on that side of the road, or you're going to park on this side of the road and have an easy out at the end of the day. And when, that, that whole study that made some determination as to whether or not the CU was going to develop that property suggested that the parking was going to be open there. But again, it's part of the, it's part of the, the look of going into Boulder and how one people, how people do it, and parking in Boulder is not $26 a day.
It could be in the next few years.
The issue for me, you know, when I, when I look at and I see, you know, how's, how is Louisville going to change when the rail system decides to stop in Louisville on its way to Denver? What is, what is it going to mean for us? How is it, how are people in Superior going to be able to capitalize on that train transportation when, and parking over there?
We won't.
It's not coming anywhere near us.
It's not coming anywhere near us.
It's not going to be worth the time to get to the train station for anybody in Superior, so nobody's going to ride the rail.
And that's why I think that, 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 that concept is not going to affect us at all.
Yeah. Mark, when we think about transportation and housing development and redevelopment in the marketplace, one of my biggest concerns is that it's just cut by Marshall Road, and what could we do differently? How could we change that so that the marketplace is more of a cohesive neighborhood where it's more pedestrian and bike friendly, where, you know, I mean, right now, it's, it's difficult to shop at Target and Whole Foods without getting in your car. And if we've got people, if we've got apartments or, you know, other kinds of housing, I think we need some really good ideas on how to address Marshall Road and how to keep the excess traffic out of original town.
We had, the Urban Land Institute did a study a couple of years ago, and then, do we have a second one that was done for...
For the fire.
But, but we had, we had, we had some visions for, maybe it was part incorporated through the Northwest Superior Plan, but we had, we had some, some ideas about kind of re-envisioning what the marketplace could be if we were starting over and moving Marshall Road and trying to get the traffic to flow in different ways. Actually making that happen is, the devil's going to be in the details with that one, but, and that's a state highway and it would be very, very difficult to, to change, but I agree with you, I mean...
Yeah, if you could bury it.
I know.
You know.
It's, it's, it's not designed to be pedestrian friendly, unfortunately.
Right.
Well, now he's original town. Original town is horrible, there are no sidewalks, there's so many young families I see on a daily basis now where there's strollers with the top, walking the North Road because there's not a sidewalk. So how do you make the marketplace pedestrian area when getting to there is basically the zone of roads and you can't walk on a sidewalk? So...
But I mean, you just go to the marketplace versus going to like, you know, any kind of more modern built commercial shopping center type open air malls. And, you know, like 29th Street in Boulder, you go over to Orchard, there are a lot more pedestrian friendly shopping experiences than what we have here. If they were building this today, it would not be built like it is. If they were building this today, it would not be built like it is. Even with a Target and a Whole Foods and a Costco, they would.
Right. But if you're introducing, if you're introducing residential, how does that have to change?
Yeah, no, I mean, there's definitely, there would need to be some pedestrian improvements to the area, for sure.
Jason's comment is interesting because my recollection from Northwest Sub Area Plan, which was done before the fire, when original town looked like original town, none of those residents actually wanted sidewalks. Maybe you should start a campaign to get them because I kind of, my, my, my observation at the time was that nobody, I mean, all, all, nobody ever sold a used car. They were just parked on the side of the road and left to rust. And of course, in Colorado, nothing rusted very quickly. So it was a challenge.
The reality, you know, and, and I get a lot of flack for saying this, but I, I tend to have this habit of not being unprone to controversy. Um, original town is gone. The fire took it out and now you're getting gentrification of houses. We're just going to supplement our tax base, which is going to be very good for the community. And in doing so, we need to be able to supplement the ability for people who are buying the houses to be able to increase the walking score. And first thing is going to be sidewalks, increase safety. There's a lot of families over here with young children. We're going to repopulate the school district, just like we have in downtown. So creating a more walkable area there leads, you know, to, um, to maybe redeveloping Bricksmore or getting Bricksmore in to have discussions in the marketplace and how do we make it more pedestrian friendly? To get people to walk over there more often than just park. I mean, parking is easy, Mark, because there's a ton of space still open. It's so much easier getting your car, drive to Target, drive back home again. But anything that we can do to maybe have a discussion about how we can, you know, make it, make it more or less of a hazard. And to Anne's point, how do, how do we do that? And I have no idea because it is just such a car centric area right now.
I, I have to ask, and maybe I, because I don't do this, I'm not, I'm missing the solution, but how am I going to Costco on foot?
Yeah.
That's not.
Are you bringing a shopping cart?
Right?
Buying a shopping cart.
I mean, I understand like the walkability between, but there's no situation where I would go into Target. Because we're not going there now, are we?
Costco on foot.
Like I'm not going to go to Target and then walk over to Whole Foods and then, I just.
But there's, there's a lot of businesses in the marketplace that you could go in on foot.
The smaller ones.
Oh, bonds and mortgages.
Yeah, I mean, you can go into Whole Foods on, on foot, right? And like just get dinner for, for the evening or.
Done that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Costco Hall.
I get that you can, right? Like I understand that you could do that. You could do it now. But the habits of usability are part of this discussion as well. And even if there is a overpass, over Marshall or, um, you know, walking paths or underpasses, where, where are people putting all their groceries and the things that they buy to wa, now walk back to wherever they live?
The only, the only people that would be going to the marketplace on foot would be the people who would be living there if there was some infill development. I imagine that the people.
Sorry, you're talking about if they built.
Right, right. Like I imagine that the folks in, in original town, the folks in Sagamore are going to continue to drive. Just because like it's still like far enough away that it's easier to just get into your car. And, you know, especially if you have more than just one bag of goods right here in a.
I mean, the daily shopping habit is not.
I think that's a little pessimistic. I don't want to generalize from my experience, but I, I walk over there more than I drive over there. But then I'm probably the closest person to it. So, uh, but I mean, I could see people going, I could see people going to Panera, for instance, from the area of walking. I mean, since one of the goals of the Northwest Sub Area Plan was to change the marketplace from a place that you drive in and drive out or to a destination where people go and stop. I mean, if there were more Paneras or Panera type act, well, there's like Casa Agave, which is very nice. I hope everybody's supporting it. But it, I mean, you're right. It means a change of mindset to get even the local people. But the local people are actually close enough to get there on foot. I mean, I see a ton of people walking around the parks. If that was where I walked to Target.
Yeah, I think also the youth, if people with not as much access to cars would be shopping there. I mean, I remember in LA, I'd walk and it was my stroller was just like, sometimes the kid would be walking and my stroller was so full of groceries, but, um, you know, because I wa, was like two or three blocks from a grocery store. So I was like, well, I'm going to walk there. So I think if we make it walkable enough, people will find ways to do that. We'll bring back those little, you know, the grandma little carts.
We have, we have 10 minutes to go. Just time check. Did you want to touch on?
Yes, I mean, item two is, I mean, can you give us an update on some of these issues? I mean, how is, I mean, is, I mean, how, how much progress is there on getting more businesses into downtown? What, what's the reaction that you're getting to the people? I mean, is anybody looking at the live work spaces? What's going to happen? I mean, I, I think Bill Jenks came and said there's 12 million square feet of unoccupied life sciences buildings in the country. Am I remembering that correctly?
Uh, I don't know who's in the country, but yeah, there's a lot.
I mean, so it seems unlikely that the life sciences building is going to get, built anytime soon. I mean, can we look at, I mean, could we, should we look at different opportunities for that?
You could, but I think, you know what, if we were to build it, we would fill it out. Boulder just built their campus and they're filling it out right now. Redtail Ridge is going to go and the Vista Hospital goes next door to it. And when they build the medical office buildings next to that, it's going to infill. Because medical office space is not an 18 to 24 month year out. It's basically one company buys another company, we need more space, go. It's, it's readily available space, not something that's marching down the road. So for us to sit here and spin our wheels thinking, oh, we're going to wait till we fill it, we're never going to do that for Boulder. So maybe that is, that is a realistic discussion to have. It's like, maybe do we change the usage of it? Because unless this gets built, we're never going to fill it.
Well, you also have to think too, in addition to the life sciences, an industry that's very close to that, I mentioned this before, is quantum sciences. And Boulder County specifically, in addition to Colorado in general, but Boulder County specifically is becoming a hub for that. And the government is funding that to the tune of like $100 billion. I mean, it's a ton of money coming in for that. So I know a campus is being built right over the hill and I believe it's our bad, it's right over by the winter vines. But for us to capitalize on some of that and bring some of those companies here, because there's going to be a very large influx of that, of that would be important.
I think there's, there's two challenges right now that I kind of think are like the explanations for why things aren't moving faster than we're, we're hoping. Number one is just kind of the, the macroeconomic trends of, we've got, uh, very expensive insurance or very expensive interest rates right now. So the cost of borrowing is cost prohibitive for, for a lot of new development right now. But then also second is with this current administration, I'm not trying to get political, but there is a basically like an industry-wide freeze on investment in the sciences. There's funding that's not going to schools. There's funding that's not going to businesses. So, uh, businesses that were previously looking to expand are now looking at this. And not only is the cost of capital that much more expensive, but there's, you know, federal funding opportunities that have evaporated and just a very uncertain environment. So the money's not pouring into life sciences today like it was two, three years ago. Certainly during the pandemic, right? So I think we're going to have to just kind of like weather that and whether it, quantum ends up being an opportunity area or something else. Or we just have to wait until interest rates come down and the economy starts to get a little, a little more juiced.
The specific medical on that, on that, those two blocks, two and five.
PMV? Yeah. They own, yeah, they own Fire and, right?
They're.
What is it? Eight is being.
Eight's being built up.
Built right now.
And what does that do for, I mean, one of the issues that Bill Jenks always raised was the bonds for the metro district. I mean, we needed somebody in there to help pay, pay those off. Is that correct? Or are they going to keep that going if there's no building there?
I think eventually that's going to be, you know, an issue for them. My, my understanding is that they, they had a schedule and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but that they've got a schedule in terms of when you're expecting things to come online and start producing more significant tax revenues from the improved lot. When the hotel burned and wasn't rebuilt, that impacted the economics because obviously that wasn't something that they were building into their calculations. But everything else is kind of built on a, on a schedule. But if that, if that lot doesn't develop at any point in time, I imagine that will impact their pro forma in terms of how the metro district's economics are going to work.
And is the town going to be looking for alternatives or are we going to be waiting for alternatives?
Well, I mean, it's not our, it's not our property, right? It's, it's owned by PMV. You think that they, they also don't want to just sit on something and not develop it, right? So I would, I would like to think that the market is going to work.
What about the hotels? I mean, you approved two hotels up there and neither of them seem to be being built.
Well, the, the Hyatt is coming this year.
Yeah, they're, uh, finalized their financing this month.
So.
That's the one in the back, right?
That is the one. We got closer to 36. The Element property is being marketed. There was, there was some interest, but it involved an unrealistic ask from the town in terms of a subsidy to, to get, to make it happen. So, so we'll see. But I think again, that's, that's something that is more a creature of wait until interest rates drop and there's more investment and development than anything that I think we can necessarily do to make a project happen.
Is there, I mean, is there any, is there more interest in building the spaces downtown or Main Street? Less interest, about the same?
Well, we just gave an incentive for a restaurant and, um, yeah, so we'll, we'll see what happens with that. We had, had a concept plan on, on a food hall right next to the plaza. So, you know, there continues to be interest. I don't think it's as fast as any of us want, but, um, I'm still really excited and hopeful that it's going to get built up. But this, you know, again, this was always projected to be like a 20 to 25-year project. And we're in year 12 and a half. So.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? We have two minutes left.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time to meet with us and we appreciate your service.
No, we appreciate you.
Good luck with the comp plan update.
Good luck with this meeting.
All right.
Well, we just have to recommend you. You have to approve this.